She's not here. Dental surgery. It gets so quiet in here right before we start. Good evening. We will call the Auburn City Council meeting for Monday, October 20th, 2025 to order. We will begin with a land acknowledgement. We would like to acknowledge the federally recognized Muckleshoot Indian Tribe, the ancestral keepers of the land we are gathered on today. We thank them for their immense contributions to our state and local history, culture, economy, and identity as Washingtonians. And today's meeting will be held both in person and virtually. And now, I would like to call forward Auburn Service Unit Girl Scout Troop number 46021. We are going to do something new this evening, and this lovely troop, come on forward, is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So, once they get organized, and everyone in the audience, if you would please rise to join us in that Pledge of Allegiance. Parents, you can come as close as you want. You don't have to stand back there. If you want to kneel down in front to get photos, you are perfectly welcome to do that. Whenever you're ready, you go ahead and begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well done, Troop 46021. Thank you so much. Did parents get all of the photos and videos that they needed? Thank you so much. Ladies, you did a beautiful job. And I understand we're going to see you in the Veterans Day Parade as well. And you are welcome to stay for this if you want, or you are welcome to leave as well, because I do know that it's a busy evening. So, thank you once again for being our first troop to do the Pledge of Allegiance for us at the council meeting. Well done. Very well done. I know I have the ones that Lucky got, but I do not have the ones from when I was a Brownie. All right. That was wonderful. Hannah, will you please call roll?
Deputy Mayor Rakes?
Here.
Councilmember Ammer?
Here.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Here.
Councilmember Sturgis?
Here.
Councilmember Clinton Taylor?
Here.
Councilmember Tracy Taylor?
Here.
Councilmember Troutmanwell?
Here. She is not here. She is excused. All right. I am going to do some proclamations. So, I'm going to move over to the podium. All right. The first one for this evening is Diwali Festival of Lights. Mayor's proclamation: Whereas over 1 billion celebrants worldwide reverently observe the festival of Diwali, the festival of lights, symbolizing the victory of Dharma and good over evil. And whereas Diwali is one of the most celebrated festivals of great significance to Hindus, Sikhs, Jains, and Buddhists. And whereas Diwali falls on October 20th this year in accordance with the lunar calendar and brings together families, friends, and communities here in the United States and around the globe in goodwill, peace, and a shared sense of renewal. And whereas the U.S. Congress officially passed unanimous resolutions since 2007 recognizing the religious and historical significance of Diwali. And whereas celebrants renew their commitment to uphold values of truth, non-harming, and restraint through their thoughts, words, and actions. And whereas Diwali is a time for Dana, charitable giving, and Seva, selfless service, by bringing light in the form of wisdom, knowledge, nourishment, and shelter to alleviate the tangible forms of suffering such as hunger, disease, and poverty. And whereas the shared Indian holiday of Diwali signifies a special time of peace and serenity with the hope of building bridges of understanding and tearing down barriers of intolerance. And now, therefore, I Nancy Backus, Mayor of the City of Auburn, do hereby recognize the religious and historical significance of October 20th, 2025, as the Diwali Festival of Lights and the Diwali's message of tolerance, compassion, and the victory of good over darkness, hope, and renewal within our community dated this 20th day of October 2025. I attended a Diwali celebration at the Consulate General's home in Bellevue on Saturday evening, and it was filled with all of those beautiful things. Next is Red Ribbon Week, and I believe Kelly Murray, Prevention and Intervention Professional at Cascade Middle School, will be coming up. And whoever you would like to bring with you?
Seth.
Mayor's proclamation: Whereas alcohol and drug abuse affects individuals, families, and communities across the nation. And whereas drug use is a public health threat that endangers our society at every level in our homes, schools, and communities, and threatens the minds, health, and character of our nation's most valuable resource, our youth. And whereas the Red Ribbon Campaign was established in 1988 by the National Family Partnership in response to the 1985 murder of Drug Enforcement Administration DEA Special Agent Enrique Quique Camarena in Mexico. And whereas the 2025 National Red Ribbon Week theme, "Life is a Puzzle, Solve It Drug-Free," emphasizes that choices contribute to a positive future. And whereas communities and schools pledge to set guidelines to help children and youth grow up safe, healthy, and drug-free. And whereas business, governments, parents, law enforcement, media, religious institutions, schools, seniors, service organizations, and youth will demonstrate their commitment, excuse me, to health, drug-free lifestyle by wearing and displaying red ribbons during this week-long campaign. And now, therefore, I Nancy Backus, Mayor of Auburn, do hereby proclaim October 23rd through the 31st, 2025, as Red Ribbon Week and encourage all residents in our community to participate in drug prevention education activities, not only during Red Ribbon Week, but also throughout the year, making a visible statement that we are strongly committed to a drug-free community dated this 20th day of October, 2025. Kelly, I will hand that to you.
Thank you.
And if either or both of you have anything that you would like to say? Please.
No, I just want to say thank you. I think that by the city, putting this on their calendar is a small, yet huge move to raising awareness for something that's a very real and big issue all over our community, but also in many communities.
I oversee drug and alcohol prevention through the Auburn Prevention Coalition in the schools and also out in the community. And I just feel very lucky to be in a city like Auburn where folks really care about the youth and where the schools and the community agencies and the city are willing to prioritize stuff like this and to think about the health and the thriving future of our youth, right? Because that's the goal, is to give youth the best chance to have the best life they can have. So, yeah, thank you for acknowledging this. And it just shows that the city, yeah, is acknowledging the ongoing work and the future work that we'll keep doing together. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. All right. And our final proclamation this evening is for Financial Literacy Week. And Erica Chen and Jasmine Nguyen from Auburn Mountain View High School DECA, if you would please come forward. Mayor's proclamation: Whereas Auburn Mountain View High School DECA provides students with the chance to create and change their community using their intellect and business-like skills. And whereas DECA students Erica Chen and Jasmine Nguyen are creating a program to raise awareness about the importance of financial literacy, with the focus that life for students should be more than just memorizing math equations. Recent polls show that most high school students have no idea how to write a check or maintain a good credit score. And whereas financial literacy is crucial to the success of our youth. Students come from a variety of different financial backgrounds, and while some may have a head start, all should have access to economic resources and knowledge. In a recent survey from Credit One Bank, it showed that roughly 39% of Gen Z adults are currently experiencing financial stress. Whereas the Mountain View DECA students want to educate others about financial literacy and its benefits for teens, as well as prepare them for the near future. And now, therefore, I Nancy Backus, Mayor of Auburn, do hereby proclaim October 20th through the 24th, 2025, as Financial Literacy Week and encourage all residents in our community to learn more about the benefits of financial literacy and to encourage the youth in our community to indulge in these lessons that teach them how to be financially literate dated this 20th day of October, 2025. Present that to you. And if either or both of you have anything that you would like to share?
I would just like to say, thank you for recognizing this week as Financial Literacy Week. And I think financial literacy is especially important within our youths. And it's very important for students and young elementary students to learn more about this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The theme for this evening is youth. All right. We will move on to appointments. The City Council to approve the appointment of Najli Shandeen to the Auburn Junior City Council for a two-year term expiring August 31st, 2026. Is there a motion? Deputy Mayor Rakes?
I move to approve Najli Shandeen to the Auburn City Council for a two-year term expiring August 31st, 2026.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember Ammer?
I second, Mayor.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Rakes?
Yes. As I, I'm very thankful for another youth stepping forward to be on the Auburn Junior City Council. And as I read her application, I was very pleased with all the things that she has accomplished.
And I believe she's been attending the meetings as well, just waiting for the opportunity to be appointed. So, excellent. All right. Are there any questions or comments from council? All those in favor of the appointment of Najli Shandeen to the Auburn Junior City Council for a two-year term expiring August 31st, 2026, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Hannah, do we have any agenda modifications this evening?
Yes, Your Honor. Ordinance number 6995 has been removed from tonight's agenda.
Thank you. And we did add the Financial Literacy Week proclamation as well. Yes, thank you. All right. We will move to audience participation. This is a place on the agenda where the public is invited to speak to the city council on any issue. We ask that if you would like to speak, that you raise your hand, come forward, give your name, city of residence for the record, and please limit comments to three minutes. And Hannah does have a clock that will count down for you, because sometimes it's hard to know what three minutes is when you're standing up in an unfamiliar setting. Is there anyone that would like to speak this evening? Please come forward.
Hi, I'm Nancy Peterson, and I've lived in Auburn almost 40 years, and lived in different parts of Auburn. And seven years ago, we moved to Rio Verde Mobile Home Park. Senior citizens, wild and crazy people, they lock us in at night and daytime. The concern I have is the street. Now, I do want to thank the council for coming to the Rio Verde and listening to us and talking to us. I was really special. But the street issue, I know we can't have speed bumps. That's already been discussed. But we need something. Don't know what we can do if we had police presence more during the weekend, if we had one of those funny little things that show the speed, how fast you're going. That would be wonderful. Something for the council to consider. Living there on that street, there's been drive-by shootings. There's been a murder. There's been police chases seen from my bedroom window. I haven't seen the murder, thank goodness, but it's really getting bad. And I don't know if the council really recognizes that. I just want, I really want the place, the park, to be good, but people are moving out of the park. There are so many for sale signs. It's unbelievable in the park because of it. We moved away from the street and went to the very back where it's quiet because of the noise. I've had several people who want to buy the house we moved out of. Look at the street. I'm not living close to that street. We don't have a sale. It's been on the market five months because of the street and the economy. But I thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson. Is there anyone else that would like to speak this evening? Please come forward, give your name and city of residence for the record, and please limit comments to three minutes.
Virginia Hagen, Auburn, Washington. Thank you to that lady. I live near a mobile home park. There was an accident over there the other night, and it did not happen because of our street. But they have, I stepped off 60 feet, and I was only halfway across their entrance. Someone was getting ready to come out of the park, and someone on a bicycle got hit. We're going to widen our street, I guess. I have men, I have a dentist over where she lived. I have been over there so many times, and I know what she's talking about. And now, a family, a very old family in Auburn is going to, they want to develop 300 acres, and it has trees. And I know people who have lived out there for a very long, long time, and the trees are going to go away. And it's not going to be the same Auburn. And I am so tired. It makes me almost cry when I hear people talk about hating Auburn. I want to get out. I know someone who believes I need to sell my house and get off of our street. I'm not leaving. And if anybody knows who Van Salas was, I told him, and I told everybody in a letter to a newspaper that I am not leaving. Auburn gave me everything I have. I had nothing when I came here, except a husband who was second generation, born and raised in this town. My granddaughter is fourth generation, born and raised right over there. And we were eating at that restaurant called The Rainbow. And we tear down a theater because it has water damage. My neighbor had a fire, and he had water damage, and they fixed it. I don't know anything about their insurance, but I know there was insurance money. And we have a PAC. We have one at Riverside. We have one at Auburn High School. I don't know about the other schools. We have wonderful things in this community. I had young people come and stay at my house for a band concert. And they raved about what we have, and we're giving it away. We're giving it away to people who simply come here illegally. I'm not talking about race, color creed. I'm talking about giving the United States away. And we have illegal businesses all over town. But this lady has to worry about noise, but we need to worry about safety too.
Virginia, your time is up.
I know. My time is up.
Yes.
But I hope you were all listening to her. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak this evening? Final time. Is there anyone else that would like to speak this evening? All right. We will move to written comments. Hannah, do we have any written comments this evening?
Yes, Your Honor. The City Clerk's Office received written comments from Linda Redman and James Delay, both of which were forwarded to you and council prior to the meeting.
Thank you. Counsel, you all received those, correct? All right. Do we have any other correspondence for this evening, Hannah? Moving to the consent agenda, all matters listed on the consent agenda are considered by the city council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Deputy Mayor Rakes?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember Sturgis?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll second.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Rakes?
The consent agenda consists of setting the date for public hearing for Sues Creek Water and Sewer District franchise agreement and setting a date for public hearing for Hyber Fiber of Washington LLC DBA ripple fiber franchise agreement and claims and payroll vouchers as listed on your agenda.
Thank you. Any questions, comments, or any items that council would like considered separately on the consent agenda? All those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. The consent agenda passes. We have no unfinished business. We have no new business. The ordinance number 6995 was removed from tonight's agenda, so moving to resolutions. We have resolution number 5860, a resolution amending the City of Auburn fee schedule to adjust for the 2026 fees. Is there a motion? Councilmember Baldwin?
Thank you, Mayor. I would move to adopt resolution number 5860.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember Clinton Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. I second that motion.
Thank you. Councilmember Baldwin?
Thank you, Mayor. So, the city council had previously passed ordinance number 5833, which had provided us the adoption of a fee schedule. And so, every year, we review our fees based on their respective departments and provide recommendations for adjustments based on either current costs or inflation where appropriate. This particular resolution is the proposed adjustments and amendments for that fee schedule to be in place for 2026. And I would put in a special note that as part of this iteration, we also had our changes for our traffic impact fees. And one of the things I think the community may be excited to see in that is with changes to our TIF program, it has brought more flexibility. So, increasing, being able to have criteria for TIF payment installation programs and fee determination approaches where if the proposed land use is not listed, it can be evaluated. And making sure that we have a supporting webpage and tools that will help provide additional transparency and predictability, as well as ways that people can have more flexibility in paying those if they are looking to start businesses in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions or comments from council? All those in favor of resolution number 5860, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Resolution number 5860 passes. Resolution number 5866, a resolution relating to the endorsement of the 2026 Valley Regional Fire Authority fee schedule as adopted by the VRFA Board of Governance. Is there a motion to approve resolution number 5866? Councilmember Tracy Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt resolution 5866, please.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember Ammer?
I second, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Tracy Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. This resolution would replace the current VRFA fees with the revised 2026 fee schedule effective January 1st, 2026. The 2026 fee schedule was adopted by VRFA Governance Board on July 8th, 2025.
Thank you. Comments from council? All right. All those in favor of resolution number 5866, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Resolution number 5866 passes. All right, council, here's your challenge tonight. Mayor and council reports. At this time, mayor and city council may report, may report, on significant items associated with their appointed positions on federal, state, regional, and local organizations. And we will begin with Deputy Mayor Rakes.
Thank you, Mayor. The only one I'll report on tonight is I obtained my certification and passed the class.
Congratulations. Councilmember Baldwin?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll do one, because I think my fellow Lions would be upset if I didn't call it out. I was able to attend our VIP dinner and reception for our visiting counterparts from Tamba, which is our sister city in Japan. It was a lovely event, and we had great presentations from our Auburn Youth Ambassadors to that program. So, if you're a student and interested, look into it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ammer?
I have long report.
Long report? How long is it, Councilmember Ammer? Because I do have, I do have the ability to cut off microphones.
I'll keep it short. On October 14th, I met with the Director Kentay and Judy Davinson, I hope I'm saying her name correctly, and Director Chrome for Community Wellness Special Focus Area Biomonthly Meeting. The chair, Councilmember Yolanda, wasn't there. Director Chrome shared that Housing Repair Program Overview presentation will be provided at next Community Wellness Study Session. Thus, the city received the CDBG allocation of $584,000, which was deposited just prior to federal government shutdown. Of that amount, 110 has been withdrawn for administrative expenses. The remaining fund must be fully expended within 18 months. Given the uncertainty surrounding future federal funding and ongoing government shutdown, staff have advised that Section 108 loan process is currently in hold. Once the federal budget issue is resolved, staff have planned to revisit both city current homeless needs and the future direction of the Resource Center before moving forward for the 108 loan. Sorry, I had to report it because kind that has said news for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sturgis?
In honor of the Mariners, I have no report tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Tracy Taylor?
I just have a quick update about the drains that we talked about the last council meeting, just a really quick one. I did find out that we have 10 adopters in the City of Auburn. 18 drains have been, oh, sorry, 18 drains have been adopted. We've collected over 121 pounds of debris. Draining McDrain face, the Flow Patrol, Clog Crushers, and the Great Drain Ene, all have the Great Drain Ene, all have had cleanings in the last three weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Clinton Taylor? He has a whole notebook.
Just one update. I'm excited that I was able to, this past couple of weeks, finish my advanced certification for municipal leadership. So, excited to finally get that done and looking forward to the Mariners game later.
It's on now. It's looking good.
Is it?
Yeah.
I turned it off because I saw.
Maybe not everybody wants to know. They might be, they might be recording it. Thank you all. Just one item, and this is just a reminder that this Saturday, October 25th, from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. at Lescove Park is trunk or treat, rain or shine. We encourage you to bring your kids out for a fun time of costumes and for candy of all kinds to be distributed. And we'll let the parents worry about how they distribute that when they get home. We are just there to hand it out to them. It's for them to decide how they want to handle it later. All right, with that, I will say, go Mariners, go Seahawks.